Yes, loud and clear.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. We'll get started in just a few minutes. Jim, can you hear us? Can't hear us. Do you have a microphone option on your iPad there? No, we still can't hear you.
Can you guys hear us?
Oh, now we have you.
Yeah, now they can hear us. Okay.
You're gonna have to turn off the other device, though.
Let's turn that one off.
I think we're ready to go. All right. Good evening, everyone. I call to order this regular meeting of the City of Campbell, the City Council, on this Tuesday, August 3, 2021. This regular city council meeting is conducted via telecommunications and is compliant with the provisions of the Brown Act and Executive Order N 2920 issued by the Governor. This city council meeting is being livestreamed on Channel 26, the city's website, and on YouTube. Madam City Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Bybee.
Present.
Councilwoman Landry.
Okay. No, now I am present.
Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Resnikov.
Your.
Mayor Gibbons.
Here.
Thank you very much. And at this time, I would like to invite some representatives from our downtown Campbell Neighborhood Association to offer the Pledge of Allegiance, and it's going to be Jim Moffett and Barry Shulman. Gentlemen.
Well, thank you guys very much, and thank you for coming and visiting.
All right. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, marvelous. Thank you, gentlemen. And so this is National Night Out, and it's a wonderful event that many of our neighborhood associations hold on the first Tuesday of August. And it enhances the relationship between neighbors and law enforcement while bringing back a true sense of community. It provides a great opportunity to bring police and neighbors together under positive circumstances. The best way to build a safer community is to know your neighbors and your surroundings. I would personally like to extend a huge thanks to the Downtown Campbell Neighbors Who Association, the Four Seas Neighborhood Association, the Hammond Park Neighborhood Association, and the Campbell Police Department for their efforts in bringing this event together and to helping the City of Campbell build strong communities through good, strong neighborly relations. So, gentlemen, have a nice rest of the evening, and thank you for putting together such a great event tonight.
You're welcome. Thanks for attending.
Bye-bye now.
Bye.
We next have special presentations and proclamations. There are none before us this evening. Communications and petitions also none. And now we are at the portion which is oral requests. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the city council on any matter not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the council are requested to register in advance. Speakers are limited to two minutes. The law generally prohibits the council from discussing or taking action on such items. However, the council may instruct staff accordingly regarding oral requests. Madam City Clerk, do we have any comments at this time?
No, Madam Mayor, no speakers tonight.
Okay, thank you. And now we will do the mayor's announcements. Due to the significant spike in the Delta variant, Santa Clara County has issued a new health order requiring masks indoors in public spaces. The mandate applies to everyone regardless of vaccination status. Testing is a critical tool in fighting COVID-19. Widespread testing provides a more accurate picture of how many cases exist in our community and helps the county understand how and where the virus is spreading. Schedule an appointment today to get tested for free. For more information, please visit covid19.sccgov.org/covid-19-testing. There are free testing. Please take advantage if you're not feeling well and you want to make sure you are not contagious. Visit this County of Santa Clara Health Department website for the latest news and toolkit on COVID-19, finding out the latest requirements for face coverings, vaccination resources, pop-up vaccination sites, and virtual vaccination sessions. Please visit covid19.sccgov.org for more information. You can now obtain a digital COVID-19 vaccine record. It's the QR code, and it's a digital copy of your COVID-19 vaccination record for use as proof of COVID-19 vaccination. Visit the State of California's website at myvaccinerrecord.cdph.ca.gov. That's M-Y-V-A-C-C-I-N-E-R-E-C-O-R-D dot c d p h dot c a dot gov. I've done mine. It was looky-doo split easy, and it's great to have on your phone if you have that type of phone. The recall election that is asking voters if they want to replace Governor Gavin Newsom will take place on September 14, 2021. The city clerk's office has information and the links to the Santa Clara County Register of Voters to assist Campbell residents. Valid drop-off boxes will be available at Campbell City Hall, Campbell Community Center, Westmont High School, and the Vote Center located at Santa Clara County Library District on Dell Avenue. Please visit campbellca.gov for more information. The California State Legislature and Governor have signed a bill that provides statewide eviction and foreclosure protection for many residential tenants and property owners suffering from economic hardship due to COVID-19. These protections have been extended through September 30. For more information about how residential tenants can receive the protections, So don't hesitate to check that out if you need information on rent. Next, time of use rates are being implemented statewide to support California's shift towards clean energy. Silicon Valley and PG&E customers that are not already on a time of use rate have automatically transitioned to a time of use rate beginning in June. You can change that rate at any time. Many electricity providers offer their customer time-sensitive or time-of-use pricing plans. These plans reflect the actual cost of producing electricity at the time it is needed. They are designed to encourage customers to lower their electricity use during the times when the cost of producing electricity is high. That's the 4 to 9 p.m. timeframe. Customers can choose to automatically transition to this rate plan or pick a different rate plan at any time. For more information about time of use, please visit pge.com or s v c l e a n e n e r g y.org, s v cleanenergy.org. The City Council shall establish a Measure O Oversight Board to provide transparency. The Oversight Board will annually review expenditures and appropriations of the tax revenue generated because of the passage of Measure O. Recruitments will begin next month. The Planning Division is pleased to announce that virtual appointments are now available. You may request a 20-minute video appointment with a planner to discuss potential projects That's a long one, but it's a good service, so it's worth the effort. Appointments are generally available the next day between 9 a.m. to 4 p.m., Mondays through Fridays. The Campbell Community Center Activity Guide is now available online. Registration will open August 10 for Campbell residents and August 11 for all others. Toddler preschool, youth classes, sports, adult aquatics, activity classes, and fitness programs are available. For more information, visit campbellca.gov/recreation. The Ainsley House is open for public tours. The house will be open modified public hours Fridays through Sundays from 11 a.m. to 3 p.m. The Ainsley House is also seeking volunteer greeters and docents to help be a part of history. Please contact Keri Perkins, Museum Supervisor, at keri, K-E-R-R-Y-P, at campbellca.gov. The Campbell Historical Museum offers a hands-on history program, inviting students to engage in experiential learning as they rotate through four different exhibit stations that will teach them about life 100 years ago and how times have changed. Zoom into History Monday, August 9 at 6 p.m. as the Campbell Museum presents the history of the James Lick Observatory with Dr. Paul Lindman. Please visit www.camblemuseums, with an S, museums, camplemuseums.com to register for this event. Live music is coming back to Campbell. The Campbell Museum Foundation and San Jose Guitar School of Music are hosting an Ainsley House Fall Garden Concert Series. This series has a lineup of talented musicians playing a variety of styles from jazz guitar and gypsy swing to Americana singers and songwriters. Tickets are on sale now at camplemuseums.com. Throughout the year and on the ADA anniversary, the American with Disabilities Act anniversary, please help share a universal future and celebrate the progress made through implementation of the American with Disabilities Act in our workplaces, schools, and communities. Each month features a theme for celebration. For the month of August, the theme is "Back to School Access." Visit the ADA Anniversary Toolkit at adaanniversary.org, adaanniversary.org. Back to school means sharing the road. As the school year begins, please remember to keep an eye out for young students who are walking or bicycling to school. Pay attention to school zones. Avoid distractions. Stay alert. Take extra precautions when you are behind or approaching a school bus. And be prepared for more traffic and for motorists making sudden stops. Help make our schools safe places to walk and bike. Thank you all. And now we begin the regular portion of the meeting, starting with Consent Calendar. We have items 1 through 6. Are there any council members who would like to pull an item from the Consent Calendar? Councilwoman Landry?
I just want to make note of a correction. Item 8 on the cover memo puts the term Consent Calendar, and it's not on the Consent Calendar.
Thank you. Yes, that's a typo. Thank you for pointing that out. So Consent Calendar items are 1 through 6. Is there any other comment on the Consent Calendar? If not, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Calendar items 1 through 6.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Landry and a second by Vice Mayor Resnikov. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember Bybee.
Aye.
Councilwoman Landry.
I.
Councilmember Lopez.
I.
Vice Mayor Resnikov.
I.
Mayor Gibbons.
I. Thank you.
The next section of our meeting is for public hearings and introduction of ordinances. Members of the public may be allotted up to two minutes to comment on any public hearing item. The applicants and appellants and their representatives may be allotted up to a total of five minutes for opening statements and up to a total of three minutes maximum for closing statements. Items requested recommended for continuance are subject to the council's consent at the meeting. Item number seven, placing the cost of abating hazardous vegetation on the property tax assessment role. Um, it is recommended that the council adopt a resolution placing these costs of hazardous abating hazardous vegetation on the property tax assessment role. And we have a presentation by Senior Planner Daniel Fama.
Hi, Honorable Mayor. May you, fellow director, it's a pretty straightforward item, so we'll let Senior Planner Fama take a break. Uh, the council had recognized back in December, the public nuisance associated with its weeds had a protest area in January. This provides the fiscal mechanism to pay for the cleanup of those weeds by the county. My understanding this is a routine item, uh, but what's before you again is allows to put a lien on those properties. So the the cost of abating those weeds can be paid back. Uh, again, available for questions, uh, if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you, Community Director. Are there any questions from council members? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing and Madam City Clerk, do we have any speakers on this item? And no, not on this one. Thank you. Uh, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask, um, if any council have additional comments or would take a motion. Who would like to make a motion on item number seven? Councilmember Bybee.
Yeah, sorry, hang on you guys.
Oh, I will, uh, make a motion that the council adopt a resolution facing the cost of abating hazardous vegetation on the property tax assessment role.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Bybee and a second by Vice Mayor Resnikov. May we have a roll call, please? Councilmember Bybee.
I.
Councilwoman Landry.
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez.
I.
Vice Mayor Resnikov.
I.
Mayor Gibbons.
I.
Thank you. That motion passes unanimously. We now move on to the section of this, uh, which is called new business. Item number eight, which is a new business item. This is a special event permit for Boogie Music Festival Remixed. It is a recommended action that the city council adopt a resolution approving the issuance of a special events permit for the Chamber of Commerce Boogie Music Festival Remixed, subject to the findings and conditions of approval, including complying with all covid nineteen recommendations set by the state of California Department of Health regarding outdoor mega events and approving of a waiver of all associated review and permit fees and fifty percent of the associated staff and equipment costs. And we have two presenters this evening, Chief Gary Berg and the CEO of the Campbell Chamber, Ken Johnson. Gentlemen, uh, Councilwoman Landry, you have a question before we begin?
Uh, no, I just need to let everybody know that I have talked with Ken prior to tonight regarding the event. Um, and that I had said if it does get approved, I would volunteer, so I just wanted to make that statement.
Thank you, madam. And Chief Berg.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Honorable Councilmembers. Um, as you know, this, uh, is a permit for the Campbell Boogie Music Festival, which is proposed to be held on Saturday, August twenty first and Sunday, August twenty second. Um, the estimated attendance for this event is about thirty thousand attendees. And if you remember back in two thousand eighteen, council actually granted authority to hold the events with the authorization from the Chief of Police and the City Manager. However, based on the current covid restrictions, um, that are in place, we decided that would be appropriate to bring this one back to to council. Um, we are recommending additional factors be considered in granting this special event permit. Um, even though there's no Santa Clara County specific regulations, there are California Department of Public Health regulations that as as they relate to outdoor mega events as they as they referred. So we're making the recommendation that, uh, that the chamber follow all of the recommendations set forth by the California Department of Public Health as they relate to the outdoor mega events. Um, in addition to the standard, um, factors that are outlined in the in the previous, uh, events and are attached to in the in this report. Um, I think it's also important to note that, um, during the discussions for this event and discussions with the chamber, normally there's a twenty five percent waiver of staff costs on this, um, for this event. And I think Ken can probably speak to this as well, but they're requesting a hundred percent fee waiver on the permit, um, review fees and a fifty percent reduction in city staffing and equipment costs. And this would total about thirty two thousand nine hundred and twenty five dollars. And that would require council authorization since it exceeds the twenty five percent, uh, fee that has been previously authorized. That really concludes my presentation. I'll have to answer any any questions you may have.
Uh, I have a question. Does anyone else have a question? So, uh, Chief Berg, you may not know the answer to this. Would, uh, the waiver of these fees be eligible for any of the, um, funding that we receive from the government, um, to cover these costs?
I see the Finance Director, uh, camera turning on. I will defer to him.
All right, um, so I, um, I see that they could potentially be. Um, I think I'm, um, I'm not one hundred percent comfortable to say, uh, tonight on that they are, um, but I I I do I do see that, um, that I do see that hires the potential. Um, so I would, um, need to check gun in into the details of, um, the A R A R P A um, just to confirm that, um, but I do see the potential.
Thanks. Thank you. And, um, I have another question and you may not be able to answer it, uh, Chief Berg until after Ken Johnson speaks. Uh, what happens if the measures required for a covid mega event, uh, collapse? Do we have a program plan in place or should I ask Ken that?
I would probably defer to Ken on what, uh, measures that they're going to be taking to ensure that those those regulations are are enforced.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Ken Johnson, CEO of Campbell Chamber, would you like to take the floor, please, or the mic, as the phrase goes?
Sure. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Great. Uh, well, Madam Mayor, members of City Council, thank you for the opportunity to talk to you. I'm gonna just give you an outline of what we're doing and then I'd be happy to answer any questions. Let me start first by just saying, uh, this is an event that would normally take place in May, that of course we couldn't do in May. Uh, we then tried to push it out at a different location in July. And now we're here, we are in August, and that's why we're calling it remix. It's it's the same kind of festival, but a little bit smaller, uh, partly because of the parklets. Uh, so same great festival, slightly different tune is how we're marketing it. So let me talk first about what we're doing in terms of messaging out. Every entrance into town will have a, will have signs that talk about, um, due to the various status of the various, we're recommending that everybody who attends Boogie be either fully vaccinated, obtain a negative test or wear a face covering. We're also stating that Santa Clara County highly recommends, by the way, this is the same recommendation for the state for mega events, highly recommends that all attendees, regardless of vaccinated status, uh, wear a mask. And, uh, so that'll be our sign is that'll be we'll be putting that out in our marketing materials as well as we start to promote the event. Uh, our website, it already says that come for a great time, but don't spoil it for others. That's what we're really trying to promote. We have no idea how many people are going to come. I would like to think we're going to be a mega event that would certainly help us and I think be a great thing for the city of Campbell. We, as a chamber, felt it was really important for Campbell to be the first city to have a festival uh, and to bring people back into the community. We learned a lot from our artisan markets we've been running since November. And one of the biggest things we've learned is that people attend if they're comfortable in coming and they don't if they're not comfortable. And the other thing we get over and over again at our artisan markets is appreciation for the fact that we're offering something in the community for people to come to. We are partnering with the county during a during Boogie and they will be having a pop up vaccination center all day Sunday from ten to five P M at the at the Boogie Festival and will be, uh, messaging and marketing around that so that is a place people can come and get vaccinated if they need to. We will have masks available, uh, at all the ticket booths and at the information booth for anybody who requires one or is that or asked for one as well as sanitation stations to throughout the festival. We'll be asking our staff and our volunteers to wear masks at the festival. Also, although it's not a requirement, it's just a recommendation from the state. So that's that's sort of that's that's our our overall plan. The the messaging from the state, since the county doesn't have anything as it relates to outdoor events, is that it's recommend day, it's only a recommendation that you check the vaccination status of people coming in. I can tell you it's not our intent to do that. We don't have the manpower to do that, to actually ask everybody their vaccination status they come in, but we're hoping through signage and just through. What we're hoping is just people respecting each other, that they that they take responsibility for themselves.
Uh, okay, um, I'll go around. I think Councilmember Lopez had a question a moment ago.
Um, yeah, my my questions may be, uh, most appropriate for for Will. Um, if and if if we don't, just pursuing your line of questioning, Mayor, if if we don't, um, use the federal funding to offset the fees, how would that impact the budget?
Um, so the, um, the, uh, total, um, uh, cost, um, to support them, the, uh, the hunt, um, that we would be just that that the council is, um, to, uh, 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 discussing, uh, tonight. Um, if if we don't, um, uh, pay through the A R A R P A, um, the half funds, um, then it would then need to come from, uh, from a general fund. Um, but, uh, based on upon the, uh, a total, uh, cost, um, based upon, um, uh, the fees, um, that are that are under, uh, uh, discussion, uh, a night. Um, I don't, I don't see that it would be a, 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 a big, uh, hand pack. Um, it it it's it certainly would need to be, uh, it certainly would need to be, uh, uh, a hundred four. Um, but we 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 may not need to do a, um, adjustment per se to, uh, the, to, uh, the, to the budget. Um, I I I couldn't, I couldn't say for sure, um, until we, uh, talked them through the, uh, man, uh, until we until we got through the mid, the, at the midpoint of the, the midpoint of the year. And, um, to to see the, uh, total, um, the, uh, total, uh, expenses, uh, at eight. Um, so I mean, the, I I I think just based upon the, uh, cost, um, that, that, I I I hires a good, there's a good, uh, chance, um, that we could, uh, cover it under the current of general, the current general fund of the budget, uh, with with without the, uh, without, uh, the, I need um, for an adjustment.
Thank you. I I appreciate it. And my next question, um, is is for Ken. Um, Ken, I know, and and thank you so much for for presenting, um, and for all your work on this. Um, I I know things are rapidly changing just in in the past week, just in the past few days, um, with some of the orders. So has any of that, uh, changed your 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 thinking, your added additional wrinkles and and how are you keeping, um, on top of all those?
We're staying on top of all of those and we are, you know, continuing to do our role in terms of informing the community of what the county is asking for for the mandated masking for indoors. Um, and if if the rules change, will will it will adapt? I don't expect that the outdoor mega event rules are going to change. They're they're next going to evaluate those on October first. Uh, and that's through the state. I don't expect that the county is going to do anything as it relates to outdoor events. And that's just based on discussions that we've had with with people. I don't I don't see that happening. And you may have more information than I do, but, uh, you know, the the intent from the very beginning, anytime we do a festival is to have an event that's safe and family friendly and that, uh, provides a good experience for the community and, uh, that's that's why we're on, um, you know, this is we're on Plan W right now for this. We've changed our plans for it so many times to adapt. Uh, we'll continue to stay flexible if we need to, but I think we're at a place now where, uh, we can adhere to what the state's asking for and still provide a great time for the people who choose to come.
And and you said you've been working with the county. Does that include on, um, some of some of the these health orders?
So as a chamber coalition, we've been working with with the head communications with the supervisors, but are mostly with the county. What we're working on is is just helping get the message out and creating a vaccination center. We would have loved to have them have on both days out there, but they'll, we've offered them a space to do, uh, vaccinations all day Sunday. They'll be out there Sunday from ten to five, as well as having an information booth out there for just general knowledge.
Got it. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Um, I would just offer for council members question with the Finance Director. Um, it is a cost to the city. It may not require a budget adjustment, but it is going to be a cost to, um, the city of thirty two, I'm looking for the direct number, thirty two thousand. Somehow, let me look here.
Nine hundred and twenty five, thirty two, nine two five.
Thank you very much. Um, so it is, it is a net cost, however the money is recovered. I would just, uh, would agree with the questions being asked.
And and I'm sorry, an additional clarification on that. Um, is that that number, am I understanding correctly, is based off the last event at full capacity?
Yeah, so we've looked at the, uh, last event, which was the Oktoberfest in two thousand nineteen. And we've definitely made some staffing changes at that event because that was right after the Gilroy Garlic Festival incident. So, um, we changed our staffing model to make sure that we were, um, adequately prepared for any type of event that could happen. So it was more expensive in two thousand nineteen than it had been in previous years. Um, and at that point, we were going to continually evaluate staff, appropriate staffing levels, but obviously since then we we haven't had one.
Uh, and so that's more.
Say, say that you broke. I'm sorry.
Sorry, that.
You've got an echo.
Yeah, maybe getting some feedback. Okay. Um, and and so this would be similar staffing levels?
It would be.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, okay, I have more questions. Is there anyone else who has questions? Seeing none, my question is for, um.
One question, Mary. Good.
Sure.
I was late with the hands. Sorry about that. I just want to clarify the amount that's being asked for the thirty two, nine two five. Do I understand that the fifteen, one oh six is part of that? That's the twenty five percent that we previously agreed to waive in these events. So are we talking about a net roughly a little under eight?
Question.
Is that, is that correct, Will?
It. I have the numbers up, Will, unless you have them.
I'm sorry.
In looking at it, a twenty five percent fee waiver would result in a loss of approximately fifteen thousand, one hundred dollars.
Which which we agreed to prior. So we're it's so just to clarify this, hit to the budget, it's a seventeen thousand, eight hundred or odd change difference we're talking about, not a full thirty two, as far as its impact on the budget, because we previously agreed to the. to the twenty five percent.
Correct.
Okay, that's all I wanted to check. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification, Vice Mayor. Okay, Councilmember Lopez, is that okay with you? You follow? Okay, thank you. My question is for Kent Johnson. I have been very supportive of the chamber doing this event. And, you know, we are where we are right now with great concern. I'm I'm worried about having a mega event and you're not doing anything but messaging and frankly, I'm thinking of Lollapalooza in Chicago this week. I I'm just worried that you're having no no checks and balances about vaccination status and wearing masks.
Yeah, well, it would take a tremendous number of, you know, this we we run this as a volunteer festival. The number of volunteers it would take to check the status of everybody coming in would be far beyond what we could do. And so we're doing, we're not outside the lines of what the state is asking for. And that's just recommending that people wear masks. It's not a mandate from the state. So I understand the concern of it of it being one and the potential for it to spread. So we're we're doing, we're doing the best we can within the the regulations that they've set. We're not, we are following what they've set. We're not going beyond that. Going beyond that would to check would be to check the vaccination status of everybody who comes through and we just don't have the physical manpower to do that.
Okay, we have no more questions. And with that, we will move to the public here, hearing portion. Now open the public comments. Do we have any comments from the public? No, we do not. Okay, thank you. Seeing none, close the public hearing and bring the item back to council for discussion and or a motion.
I'll make a motion if there's no comments.
Now I'm ready to take the chair will consider a motion.
I recommend that
Sorry, we do have someone raising their hand now. Councilmember Bybee.
Thank you. I have just one concern. I I support the festival. I'm I'm looking forward to it. I think it's it's going to be good for the community and trying to get us back to and I I shared this concern today with staff, but I just I wanted candy here from my my point of view and it has to do with alcohol consumption. In in uh, previous festivals in a normal year. Restaurants, the downtown restaurants, particularly a few that that are more popular with bars had had staff there to prohibit people from taking alcohol off site from the restaurant. And with COVID regulations a bit lax and people are being allowed now to take do take out food and take out alcohol. I just wanted to be sure that there's some mechanism in place with with those restaurants to ensure that their patrons are not taking alcohol and and walking around downtown Campbell drinking it, that it's more of a takeout and that and that they're going, you know, home with it or wherever they're going to go. And and so I want to make sure that that's in place with with the chamber and and with with the restaurants and they're aware of that. I I I understand that it's on responsibility of the restaurant, but it's a concern of mine. I I've observed it a couple of different times personally on non-festival events. I I witnessed it at the wine walk and I I just want to be sure that the alcohol consumption from restaurants doesn't get out of hand or doesn't exceed what what the wine and and arts or the the alcohol, the wine and beer that's being sold at the festival.
Yeah, thank you. That's a that's a great point. And we actually will be going around and we talked to every restaurant and bar downtown in person. And we also asked them to withhold for one hour following the festival to not serve anybody who came from the festival, sort of a stoppage of alcohol. But you bring up a good point. We do provide to the police department. The glassware and the the cups that we'll be using at the festival. And part of the part of our security team and the police department is to make sure that that's the only glassware and drink stuff, drink items that are out on the streets to try to maintain that. And that's I had not considered that. I will make sure I make that point with the restaurants to really to not allow drinks to go. If we can do that during the during the festival, if we can if we can manage that at all, I'll ask for the restaurants cooperation that we are going to be enforcing only the the cups that we provided to the police department for for access for availability on the street during the festival.
Right, thanks, Ken. I appreciate that. I would support and reinforce that. That has been a major consideration of learnt lessons learned in the past. And it's a little bit tougher now because of the COVID alcohol relaxation of rules. So Ken, you may have a bit of a challenge there to make sure that that's adhered to.
We will do our best. Thank you for that. We we will definitely make that known.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you. I I one additional question. Can I understand that the the staffing challenges? Or well, when you have volunteer and and just checking everybody's status, have has there been consideration requirements around rules for for any volunteers, either, you know, requiring masks or requiring vaccination because that that may be more manageable in a way to model good behavior?
Yeah, so we are going to, we are asking all of our volunteers and staff to wear masks. The one unknown here that would might be able to help us is we're you know, because schools haven't been in session and we we do rely on the ROTC through the Campbell High School District in the past, but since they haven't been in session, we haven't been able to get in touch with Gunny to see if if they'll be there. If they'll be there, that helps us a little bit in terms of volunteers. Sort of just having our security team on the outside, but we are asking our volunteers, anybody working booth to wear masks.
And and I I would just add that something that would give me additional comfort would be to either, you know, check vaccination status for volunteers or or testing, which a lot of places are moving to.
Thank you. I'll I'll talk to Teresa about that tomorrow and we'll see if we can't just add that, find a way to do that in a way that we can get the answers.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would support that comment as well. And I again, this is complicated. I appreciate, but any of your foods, any of your vendors and your food service vendors in particular. It would be appropriate to have them vaccinated or wearing masks, just having them wear masks. I don't know what your intention is for that.
Yeah, I'll be reaching out to all of them starting tomorrow individually anyway for outside food vendors and I'll have that conversation with them.
Okay. So I'll just say I'm nervous about having the event. I I will just say that I'm nervous. All right, we were back to having a motion.
Yes, thank you. I recommend that the city council adopt a resolution approving the issuance of a special event permit for the Chamber of Commerce Boogie Music Festival remix subject to the finding and conditions of approval, including complying with all COVID nineteen recommendation set by the State of California Department of Public Health C D P H regarding outdoor mega events and approving a waiver of all associated review and permit fees and fifty percent of associated city staff and equipment costs.
A second. We have a motion by Councilwoman Landry and a second by Councilmember Bybee. May we have a roll call vote, please? Yes, Councilmember Bybee.
Hi.
Councilwoman Landry.
Hi.
Councilmember Lopez.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Resnikov.
Hi.
Mayor Gibbons. I reluctantly All right, that motion passes. Ken, I wish you a lot of good luck. We're gonna need it.
Well, we're we're gonna do. Thank you very much for your support and thank you to the entire city staff for for all the support in the planning stages for this.
Thank you. All right, we move on to item number nine. This is a virtual reality technology for crisis interventions training. It's a recommended action, provide feedback to the Santa Clara County Cities Association regarding its consideration and recommendation to encourage public safety departments within the county to utilize virtual reality check technology for crisis intervention and de-escalation training. And the presenter is Councilmember Bybee and City Manager Brian Loventall.
So, Councilmember Bybee, do you want to make any introduction comments or you want me to take the lead here?
I'll just say that I am the city's, the city of Campbell Cities Association representative. And this topic was presented at a previous meeting and they asked all of the representatives on this cities association to go back to their respective cities to get input on on this information. And so I was looking to get some direction, some guidance from my colleagues as well as from staff as to what what the what they feel the value of this of this training would be. So it was it's more an information gathering tool and and I appreciate the staff taking the lead on this and and providing the feedback and preparing the report and getting the feedback so I can go back to the cities association and and explain or let them know where where our city stands on this.
So it's a great introduction, Councilmember Bybee. Appreciate that. A little bit of background is contained in the report to how this recommendation came about. As the council's aware, after the the murder of George Floyd, the cities association took on the role by forming a racial justice committee to look at ways to partner with the fifteen cities and and make some some progress with regard to three different priority areas that they identified, including portable housing, public safety reform and hate crimes against Asian American Pacific Islanders. The recommendation before you tonight is just dealing with public safety reform. And specifically, the the recommendations as outlined in the staff report. The racial justice committee recommended to the cities association four recommendations. One, support advanced training for police officers through the utilization of V R technology. Encourage all public safety departments when at the county to complete the training. Three, submit a letter to the member agencies encouraging participation in V R training. And four, submit a letter to the Commission on Peace Officer Standard and Training. This is post advocating for law enforcement agencies in the county that have applied to receive the stimulator simulator. So when those were presented to the cities association, the board did not take any action with regard to the recommendations as was highlighted by Councilmember Bybee. And the request was for the members to come back to the cities and provide some input on those recommendations. A little bit of background on this, the what's being called V R technology. This is virtual reality technology. And it's used on intervention and de-escalation training. Specifically, it allows for controversial police incidents that occur across the country to be turned into virtual reality stimulation simulations almost instantly after they occur, allowing officers to learn from real life mistakes and train for real world situations. The technology could also increase efficiency and scenario based training and allows officers to train with all of their tools, handgun, tasers, rifle, pepper spray and flashlight. Additional benefits including decreasing the need for instructor role playing during the real life scenario drills, alleviating the the need for different training locations and introducing array of array of virtual environments with various factors in play. The training curriculum has such issues that it it tries to get at such as cultural competency, de-escalation, critical decision making and peer intervention and implicit bias training. So you know, th- these are all great things that our law enforcement should be training on. It's it's merely a tool among many, many tools that we use for training of police officers in the conversations with the racial justice committee and the cities association. They worked very closely with the Santa Clara County Police Chiefs Association of all the cities and the police chiefs to come up with something that that would really be supported. Not just by the cities, but but also by by the the police chiefs and the police agencies. And this this was their number one recommendation. It has been supported by the Police Chiefs Association. It's very similar, if not exactly similar to some of the training we do already in utilizing technology. And so for for me, at least my recommendation is that perhaps we don't embrace any particular brand of training, whether it's Acme Company or, you know, X Y and Z company, but the the concept of collaborating on and regionalization of training and using technology and training are all things I would suggest that the council consider embracing. And I think that would be appropriate feedback to share with cities association. But we weren't here tonight to to hear what I would recommend. I I think Councilmember Bybee is looking for council input from her peers on on your thoughts on this type of training, but I did want to highlight the fact that this is supported by our chiefs association. And it is very similar to the training we do already. And it likely regardless of whether or not the council or the cities association supports this training, that our police department will likely continue to train using this technology. So I figured that was important to your decision. I'm certainly willing to answer questions. I know Chief Berg is also in this meeting. If there's questions, he can answer as well.
Thank you both. Councilmember Lopez, you would like to begin with a question?
Yeah, thank you. I I understand that we're not necessarily voting on this aspect tonight, Brian, but I I just like to understand better if if this moves forward. Logistically, how how would it work? What what's the cost of city or, you know, is it through post? Which is identified in the report or would would we kind of stick with our own program? Yeah, or chief, thank you.
Yeah, I think I can answer your question. Just so you know, the Axon contract that we brought to a month or so ago includes V R technology. So with that new improved technology that we're getting by signing that contract, we have been already planning on using this V R technology. So there would be no additional cost since that that comes with with the officer safety plan that we previously discussed. Obviously, there's costs associated with with training and overtime, but we have a very robust training program and this would be integrated into that. So there would be no additional budget adjustment requirements that would fit within our ongoing training that includes use of force and de-escalation and critical incident training type type situations.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Resnikov?
Thank you. So Chief, this is a question for you. So I think and and I think it'll help clarify where we are to the cities association. The V R takes kind of current training we do to another level, right? Because we have a simulator that's used at Evergreen College or was at Evergreen at one point. I know there's been some other training in San Jose Simulator. This is taking that step from a screen to a goggles and things like that, but but the type of training they're asking us to do limited by the technology that we've had so far, we have been doing. Is that correct?
I think that's very accurate. We we have really been at the forefront of use of force training on de-escalation training, like I said, in a different context where our officers participate in training where they're standing in front of a screen, looking at a actors on the screen and they're responding to to what's going on in front of them. This actually takes technology up a level where they're wearing the actual virtual reality goggles. They have the different tools available that are integrated into that that technology and allows the scenarios to play out very differently based on their their actions.
So so I'll stay away from comments. We're not there yet, but from from what the city manager suggested, if we embrace V R technology is the next step and we embrace maybe maybe there's VR technology is the next step and we embrace maybe, maybe there's some common training that can be offered around the, at least the county or so. This is an extension of what we're doing. So it would make sense. I mean, this is not, this is not new to us, but maybe it makes it better utilizing. Technology we didn't have before. So it sounds very all positive. I mean, it's just a matter of agreeing on the content and the extent to which we can share the content. Is that the training content?
I guess I don't understand the question.
I guess, I guess, um. There's no dispute that this, that the VR adds a good component to the training.
Absolutely.
So the city manager was suggesting some broad, some broad statement on that and I was agreeing, saying that the issue here is we don't know what kind of training. Who, who provides the, the content, for example? Can the content be the same for all cities that are part of the Cities Association? But you would be supportive, it sounds like, of this concept of expanding it. We just don't know how to implement it exactly.
Well, I, I think we, we do actually have an implementation, implementation plan with, with our Axon system. What was presented to the Cities Association and was also presented to the County Chiefs Association. Was a specific company that Post was offering. Grants for police departments and Sunnyvale was, was one of the ones who presented at the Cities Association. So they were presenting a very specific company and. We have that same technology with Axon and it's providing the same training, just in a different format, different, different company.
Okay, so with, so, so if we're staying away from the specific content, you're, you're in full agreement, it sounds like. You've already invested in, in this, basically. Okay, so that's a good, that's a good response. I mean, for the Cities Association to understand, it sounds like we're supportive, but, but on a path forward. Okay, so thank you.
So if I may, I'd like to keep us focused on questions. And I, I wanted to just highlight three different factors. One is that we are talking about VR technology, just as a topic. Two, we're talking in this presentation about a particular vendor. Okay, and that particular vendor has a particular specific, I don't know. Program, software, something that would take. Real-time situations and convert them to virtual reality training programs. That's what I took away from the material. So I wanted to make sure, because it seems to me that we're talking about kind of three separate things. It's the technology of the VR. We're talking about the company that's being specifically referenced here. And the other is the kind of information that they are presenting and is another system comparable. That's what I'm taking away from that. Does that make sense to the chief? You follow what I'm saying?
I, I think so. And, and hopefully this will provide clarification. When the Cities Association came to us. They wanted to partner with all the police departments in the county. To present an idea to address the issues that, that came out of, of the events of last summer. And as a group, I think we, Santa Clara, California and Santa Clara County in specifically are far ahead of the training curve of law enforcement throughout this country. And training is of the utmost importance here. A huge priority is put on that. So what was the feedback that was given to the Cities Association was. While it did use a specific company, because that company was the brand that. Sunnyvale and San Jose and the Sheriff's Office received a grant. The, the feedback from the Chiefs Association wasn't specific to, yes, we should all be using that same company. The feedback was we should put a priority on enhanced training. I.e. virtual reality training that will give our departments the ability to better train, to utilize technology to our advantage. To better train our officers to address whatever situations come their way. So that we can de-escalate the situations and use the least amount of force necessary.
Thank you. I think based on Councilmember or Vice Mayor Resnikov's comments and, and my questions, I think we're getting a little better focused. So thank you. Councilwoman Landry.
Yes, thank you. Chief. How effective is this virtual reality training versus in-person, everybody live people situation? Is this a on par even? Is it less, more?
I think it's, it's different. It definitely has some advantages when you're dealing with role players. There's a lot of. We call it scenario creep that comes into play where you do things that you may not do. In a real-world scenario. However, when you have real people, you can actually put on handcuffs and can actually. Take it to that next step. But the advantage of, of the technology allows an infinite number of scenarios. Scenarios created based on a situation that happened yesterday could be created in a virtual reality environment. So that something that an officer dealt with yesterday, we can put the rest of our officers through that same scenario tomorrow. With the technology. So I think it's different. And when we look at our training, we don't, there's not a one-size-fits-all. I mean, we. We do range qualifications with our gun, using real bullets. We do. Using paintballs, we do using simulators. So we're, we're, we're looking for every different possible way of training our officers to be better prepared. And looking, and I think technology is just going to enhance that and provide just a different lens, but it won't. Completely replace real people where you're actually putting handcuffs on, because that obviously is an important skill that needs to be trained on regularly.
So if something happened today, the body cam from the officer today could then all immediately tomorrow become the virtual reality training? Or do they have to reenact it?
I, I don't think we're quite there on that timeline. I think that's where it's going to go. But these scenarios can be recreated in a virtual environment. I, I don't think we're quite there with, I know I said it happened today and then we train. I probably expedited the timeline a little bit, but. I, I think with where we're going, it's gonna, it's gonna be there fairly soon.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I have one more question. I think one of the benefits that I read in the report that the Cities Association was looking for. Was consistency of training across departments. And if I follow the conversation correctly. Ax, was it Axon, Axon would have its own. Scenarios in its virtual realities that may be different than what someone else in another system such as. This one would be.
Yes, but all of our trainings that we do are post-certified. So the police officer standard and trainings for the state of California. So there's a rigorous program to certify our different training courses, whether it's emergency vehicle operation or handguns or defensive tactics. And whether we're using our Axon technology or this other technology. To become post-certified, it has to follow the same guidelines. So while you may not be seeing the exact same image or the exact same scenario. It meets the requirements of the training that are set forth by state guidelines of post.
Okay, okay. Thank you. That was also helpful. Councilwoman Landry, your hand is still up. Do you have some more questions? You're okay, okay. Thank you. With. That, if there's no additional questions, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item, Madam Clerk?
No, nobody has signed up.
Thank you very much. We will close the public hearing and bring this item back for discussion. Or I'm going to say discussion before motion. So I have discussion. I think what I'm. What I'm hearing and learning, which was difficult from the staff report, I think the discussion's been very helpful tonight. As I said, we're really talking about several different factors and the feedback, I would suggest. That the discussion has led counsel to is that VR reality training is a very positive. And that Campbell is already in the process of preparing to do it through its new vending vendor Axon. Okay, so total support for that aspect of the recommendation. The subject, and we would not follow the same, we would, do not see the need to utilize the same vendor across all cities. And then the biggest question, I'm still a little, I understand the, the subject matter has to be certified by Post. But one of the strengths in this proposal, as I read it. Was that it would take current events and translate them into virtual reality training. Which to me was a very positive, rather than having, I'm going to call it generic situations. They would have real situations in a timely manner. So. That's sort of where I'm hearing the conversation, that everybody supports VR training and we're already doing it. Would that make sense to everybody?
And Mayor, if I, if I may add, we've actually, even though we are moving full forward with Axon. We do do advanced officer training continually and one of those annual trainings. Is we utilize San Jose's training facility that has the simula, current simulator where you're looking at a screen. So we've already had conversations with them about this, the VR technology that they're getting. So I, I wouldn't be surprised if even though we're doing on our own ongoing VR training with our Axon. That when our officers go through specific advanced officer training. When we utilize a facility like San Jose's, that we will be using the same company. So I, I actually think it's probably going to end up being a combination. Just because of what I said before, which is the more training, the better. And we're always looking for, for improvements.
Thank you. That's helpful as well. Okay, so to move this discussion on. If we're giving feedback to Councilmember Bybee. My feedback that I'm trying to build consensus on here is that we're supportive of VR. Campbell's already committed to it. We're going to be using a different vendor than the one that's recommended, but it's possible. That we will end up utilizing some of that material because of the facilities we would share, such as San Jose Simulator. Okay, I think that's basically it. And any comments and perhaps Councilmember Bybee could comment on how she thinks that might help, give her information.
Yeah, thank you very much. The, the dialogue was, was very helpful. As I listened to the presentation at the Cities Association, I, I got the sense that they were really trying to push. This training and this one vendor. And as I sat and listened to it, what came across my mind is that. Campbell has always had a priority on training and, and has always exceeded training and, and made sure that our officers have the necessary tools and, and training that they need. In, in order to deal with all types of situations. And as Chief Berg said earlier, many. One size doesn't fit all. And, and in this instance, I mean, I, I, I understand now that we do support the technology. We, we do have the capability with the Axon. And I'm comfortable now going back to the Cities Association to say that we, we do support this, but we're doing it in our way and, and not necessarily. Supporting. A countywide effort, but by going with one particular vendor. And, and, and the training also depends on, you know, the size of the department and the budget and some cities can't afford this, this type of thing, but, but. As long as I know that the chief supports this and that it is incorporated in our, in our daily training and I, I'm comfortable with, with going back to the Cities Association and relaying that information. If, if the council. Agrees with what I just said.
Okay. Okay. So does anyone on the council have any feedback other than what Councilmember Bybee said? Or do you concur with Councilmember Bybee? Vice Mayor Resnikov?
Yeah, I'll just say I concur with that assessment and I think that's, that's fair. Where's, we stay away from dictating the training. Curriculum. I think everything you said is exactly right.
Councilmember Lopez is in agreement. Councilwoman Landry is in agreement and I am in agreement. So I think we've had a good discussion. Thank you. I thought it was a good discussion.
Thank you, everybody.
Appreciate. Okay, with that, we will move on to item number 10. And item number 10. Is the implement stage three potable water restrictions to correspond with the water conservation goal of 33% compared to the 2013 usage. This is a resolution and roll call vote. Recommended action is that the city council adopt a resolution to implement stage three drought restrictions based on the Santa Clara County. Sorry, Santa Clara Valley Water District and San Jose Water Company's water conservation goal of 33% of 2013 usage. And we're having a presentation by Public Works Director Todd Caberso.
Well, that's close. You're going to see me for a second and I'm going to introduce, I'm going to introduce a new face that maybe some of you haven't seen before. So. Back in February of 2020, we hired our environmental program specialist. And then of course in May, in March of 2020, everybody knows what happened. And so we've all kind of been working in a, in a closed building for the most part since then. So many of you have not met Perry Newby, who you now see on camera. She is the city's environmental program specialist. And she largely staffs the West Valley Clean Water Program and, and the West Valley Solid Waste Management Authority. But, but as, as other duties as assigned, also has, has duties related to any and all other in environmental issues. And so. So Perry has largely put this report together and has a nice presentation that will. That will reacquaint some of you and acquaint others with, with what the city's drought ordinance is and where we stand with regard to our conservation goals. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Perry Newby. Thank you.
Well, welcome Perry and the floor, their mic, whatever, the screen is yours.
Thank you. And good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me today. I am going to share my screen for presentation and this evening I would like to. Present on actions that local agencies have taken to address the current water supply shortage. As well as proposed stage three of Campbell's Own Municipal Code drought measures. And we have coordinated with San Jose Water Company and Valley Water and our proposed action is consistent with their water-saving goals and the messaging being sent to their customers. Currently, the water retailers are calling for a reduction of 15% compared to 2019 usage. The city's municipal code includes drought measures that are reflective of 2013 usage. So to align the 2019 comparison with our current municipal code. The call for the 15% conservation is equal to a 33% of 2013 usage. The conversions of these two numbers is important in order to understand which drought measure stage we are proposing to implement. Wanted to go over the background of the drought measure stages. The city's drought measures were adopted in September of 2015. The ordinance was adopted and implemented due to the most recent emergency drought, which we faced from 2014 to 2017. The ordinance is, it consists of permanent water use restrictions and it also has four progressive levels of water conservation stages. Each stage is based on projected end-of-year groundwater storage. And includes a specific conservation percentage and any associated water use restrictions. The restrictions are used to meet that conservation target that that stage calls out. The stages developed in the ordinance were based on 2013 pre-drought water usage. So as I had said, this means that the 15% call for conservation based on 2019 usage. Is equivalent to the 33% reduction compared to 2013 usage. Therefore, the implementation of stage three of Campbell's drought measures would meet the percentage call for conservation as well as the associated restrictions. Enacting stage three. Enacting stage three is in alignment with several local agencies, including our water retailer, San Jose Water Company. Here you'll see the timeline of the current call for conservation. On June 9th, Santa Clara Valley Water District called for a 15% reduction compared to 2019 usage. On June 15th, the County Director of Emergency Services proclaimed a local emergency regarding the drought. On June 23rd, our water retailer, San Jose Water Company, supported Valley Water's 15% call for conservation and enacted stage three of their water shortage plan. Finally, on July 8th, Governor Gavin Newsom extended his previous drought proclamation, which included Santa Clara County. I also wanted to add that nine jurisdictions, local jurisdictions have presented or planned to present to their council water conservation stages and restrictions that are in alignment with Campbell's stage three proposal. I would like to take some time to go over the potable water use restrictions that fall under stage three. Stage three conservation percentage and majority of the restrictions are in alignment with our water company's direction. And the agency will actively educate and perform outreach to water, to water customers on these water use restrictions. The implementation of stage three would include not only the stage three specific restrictions, but everything working up to that. That includes the permanent stage one and stage two requirements. So going over those briefly, permanent water use restrictions, they're always in effect. And they were adopted in order to sustain water conservation as a way of life. This means excessive water usage that creates runoff or flooding on any hardscape is prohibited as well as using a hose without a proper shut off valve. Stage one of the drought measures prohibits watering between the hours of 10:00 AM and 8:00 PM. And no watering can occur within 48 hours of rainfall. Additionally, restaurants are limited to serving water upon request. And hotels and motels shall provide guests with the option to not have their towels or linens laundered daily. Moving on to what's included as stage two. Stage two prohibits the use of potable water for construction purposes. This includes any washing of streets, backfill and dust control. And stage three limits watering to only two days per week. And water retail customers must fix leaks within 48 hours of being notified by the water company. Additionally, the filling and refilling of pools, decorative fountains, ornamental lakes or ponds is prohibited. In order to meet the call for conservation as well as lead by example, our city operations and facilities will be adjusted upon the implementation of stage three drought measures. Potable water will significantly decrease due to the two day limited irrigation schedule and potential irrigation shut offs. As a result, residents may see some turf brownouts. However, the turf irrigation changes will be prioritized by residential use. So for example, we have many athletic fields and those have higher use than say aesthetic turf that have low use. So less of a priority for us. Additionally, recycled water will be used to maintain city trees as well as street sweeping and construction dust control. So regarding this agenda item, I do want to acknowledge that we have received two desk items. One from California Pool and Spa Association as well as from Valley Water. But that pretty much wraps up my presentation. Councilmembers, I do appreciate your time this evening. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding enacting stage three of the city job code.
Thank you, Perry. Appreciate the presentation. Councilmembers, who might have any questions? Councilwoman Landry?
Yes, thank you. We have, JDM has new landscaping. We just approved Campbell Park, which has new landscaping. We're looking at our police and our library, which are also going to have new landscaping. Are we going to make any modifications to these projects in light of this drought?
I'll take that one, Perry. No, we don't propose to at this point. You, you know, you probably, you, you may have heard me say this over the years that, that 70% or more of, of our water use is outdoor water. And 70% of that 70% is turf water. So where we're going to get our savings is not necessarily on plant material around playground. It's going to be by how we manage turf. We're going to get the biggest savings by prioritizing the types of turf that we have. As Perry mentioned, we will, we have three tiers of turf. We have the higher use athletic fields. We have the very low priority, kind of more aesthetic turf areas where you might see turf in park strip areas. And those are going to be low. And, and, and in this particular scenario that we find ourselves in, we're going to save much more water by dialing back the water on those aesthetic areas. And, and also by maybe, you know, reducing what we do on, on sports fields far more than what we're going to get on plant material in, in and around our, our playgrounds and our proposed city facilities. So that's really how we're going to meet our, our, our water conservation is by, by turf management essentially.
Let's see, is this a question or a comment? I'll save my other thing for comments.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Vice Mayor Resnikov?
Thank you. Todd, it's so, this is an offshoot of the desk item we got, which talked about pools and all that, which was, which we received today. Is there any distinction between in looking at pools that are either under construction or under repair right now? The, the reason I'm asking is it was brought up about the cost of filling a pool. I, I did have a neighbor one time that believed in the off season, you empty your pool, you don't have to maintain it, you don't have to clean it and you refill it. That's a total waste, obviously. But that being said, we may have developments going on now that are putting in a community pool or, or somebody building a pool. Is there any distinction in this plan that allows a one-time fill? For that use, I wouldn't think if there are pools that need to be filled, we want to keep them open. Not only depriving the use, it's a hazard. So it seems like that might be an exception, especially since you just said essentially 49% of our problem is turf.
Right.
So just wondering if that, if it makes sense to exempt repairs or new builds because I, I don't want them empty.
No, that, that's a great point. It actually does. And our ordinance unfortunately does not speak to it, to a transition time. So you know, I obviously, I mean, it makes a lot of sense for things that are, that are under construction or in progress to, to, to go ahead and do some level of, of completion. There's also a bit of an inconsistency between what our, our ordinance says versus what some revised ordinances that we've seen from, from other agencies are saying. So the, the reality of where we're at right now and being in stage three is that, you know, even though this is being called a mandatory conservation, there is very little enforcement action that will go with this. This is really a strategy to gain conservation through education and, and essentially voluntary compliance. And that's why, you know, we, we have the savings goal that we have that doesn't necessarily translate to customer by customer, but is really talking about that level of savings in, in the aggregate, right? So how do, how do various water users across this valley use their water? Because our, our water shortage is valley wide. It's not a Campbell centric problem. It's not a San Jose problem. It's for all of us in this valley. And so these are the savings targets that Valley Water has laid down. And now all of the retailers are filtering that message out to their customers. And in many cases, the city is the retailer, but in our case, we're not. So we're just trying to be in alignment with our water retailer to get the same message out. Where, where we think this will go is if these measures don't get that level of savings, as, as we may find that very shortly, and we hope this doesn't play out this way, that we'll find ourselves at the next most stringent stage. In which case, we will go back to these things being tracked on individual bills, which to this point, San Jose Water has not said that they will be doing that. They're looking for people to comply with this conservation targets. And if we do that, we'll all be in good shape. But if we find that that's not successful, it will be down to a customer by customer water management strategy. And they haven't said this, but I would guess that perhaps we'd be looking at that tiered rate structure that all of us did not enjoy a few years back. And, and that really puts the impetus then on the customer to prioritize how they use water. So if you're, you know, aside from enforcement, but if you're really going to prioritize filling a pool over maintaining your lawn or both, you're, you're going to pay the price. And then there may, you may find an enforcement action that accompanies that. We are not there yet. What we're really looking at is how to educate the public and what the frequency of irrigation would be, what, what the appropriate use of potable water would be. And, and the hope is that we will achieve the savings target that, that we're looking for.
Thank you. My question, hopefully Perry can answer and it ties in with what Director Capurso just said. I've been challenged by your numbers. So my example was very simple. I said, if I used 100 gallons, and, and let me qualify this. What I have been debating with the city manager is, are we talking in aggregate, as Director Capurso just said, versus as an individual? And as a council member, my questions are from individuals. So that's why I'm emphasizing this particular discussion about math. So your, my example was if I used 100 gallons of water in 2013, I was required, requested or ended up saving 30%. So my water uses went down to 70. I've maintained the 70 for the whole time. And my, personally, my yard looks it. I don't have any bandwidth to go down another 15%. In aggregate, our community may have not done what I and other individuals have done. They may have gone from the 100 to 200 or 300. But many people have worked very hard to stay below. So what are your thoughts on that, Perry? How can we work with our individual residents and businesses to help them understand what they're expected to do and how they may or may not get penalized?
Thank you, Mayor, for that question. And I too have remained a water conservationist since the previous drought. So the main thing is a lot of education and outreach is our enforcement mechanism for maintaining conservation. And for those of us who have maintained that conservationist lifestyle, the only thing, excuse me, that I suggest is paying attention to the specific water use restrictions. Because San Jose Water Company will come out and educate and provide outreach anytime they receive, anytime, any kind of code complaint or violation. And they'll come to you or reach out to you and provide education and outreach about the status of the water supply and the current water use restrictions. For individual people, common residents, it's not necessarily asking people to cut back an additional 15%. It's to pay attention to those water use restrictions. And those will help maintain a whole aggregated compliance with the conservation goal. Hope that makes sense.
Yeah, yes, it does. But that's a major educational point. And I'll come back to that in the discussion. Do we have any other questions? Seeing none, we will open the public hearing. Do we have any questions or comments from the public, Madam Clerk? No, we do not. Okay, we will close the public hearing and go back to discussion. And I would just offer a beginning comment, which is, I think it would be very helpful to post the video section of this meeting, this item number 10 on the city's webpage for water conservation. So the entire presentation is going to be much more beneficial to the community. Your slides and everything and the way you explained it and your answer to this last question, I think would really simplify a communication tool to our community. And I think it would be easier for staff as well as council members to answer the question when we're asked. So that would be a recommendation of mine in particular. Anyone else have any comments? Councilwoman Landry?
You know, I have to have some comments here.
Well, you're allowed.
Okay, so I heard what Todd said about 70% is lawn of 70%. But it's our public perception. And if I'm going to have to go around and tell people you can only water twice a week, odd or even, and we're putting in plants at two feet on center in our playground. And to start out, the first couple of months, you gotta water almost every day. There is no way you're going to get by in a brand new landscaping, two days a week with water. So we're having, we're in a drought. We're telling everybody brown is the new green. Let your lawn go brown. Replace your lawn. Cut down landscape or watering. And then we're out putting all new plants at JDM and at Campbell Park. I mean, when I looked at the Campbell Park plans, I couldn't believe how many plants were on there. And I, I should have said it that night, but I don't support us putting in new landscaping right now. I think it doesn't send the right message to the community of what we are trying to promote. Save water. Well, then why are you putting in all this new stuff? And very densely putting it in. So I, I don't know if that's can be part of the motion, but I would like to see some of these projects, the planting part put on hold, put bark and mulch in them.
May I request a clarification? I think there's the ability to use potable, non-potable water. The, the issue is potable water. So I think everything's to go to non-potable.
You're going to truck it in to put, put in the pump to water? Or come bring a water truck out and spray the landscaping every day?
I've done, I've done that in other projects over the years. So yeah.
Okay, then let's, but we need to do something, whether it be require these projects to use non-potable water or cut, I think it's easier to just put out a change order. Don't put plants in right now. JDM may be too far along. Campbell Park's not out to bid. We got police and library a year away. I just.
So may I, may I ask Councilwoman Landry and staff, I think we have to be a little careful about going past what's on the agenda topic. So the agenda topic is implementing stage three. You're bringing in relevant discussion, but on different topics is how, the topic is how to apply stage three to current future city projects. And that may have to be a separate discussion?
Well, implementing stage three is water reduction by removing new planting is water reduction. Plus, if you go back to 2013, I doubt these parks had that high a water use.
Okay, Public Works Director Capurso.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to comment. I mean, I, I think what, what Councilwoman Landry's bringing up are, are, are good points. I, I don't, I guess I would differ with, with her on, on how we manage our water and what the perception is. I mean, I, I think there is also a viewpoint that says as people are browning out their turf and landscape at home, it makes park use all the more valuable, right? So there's that other competing school of thought there that we need to provide park space. But what I actually wanted to point out is that if we go to stage four, which we're not recommending at this point, much of what you're recommending would occur in stage four. We, we're just not in that severe of a water conservation mode at the, at the, by recommending stage three. So in stage four, you, you will see that, that much of, much of the
much of the watering and irrigation of any vegetated areas are prohibited in in many, many cases. So that's, that's a different scenario. And if we get there, we will clearly have to address that. But what we're recommending tonight does not put us into that scenario.
Okay, I'm just, we're telling people you can't fill your pool. You just build a brand new $60,000, $70,000 pool and you can't fill it. And then you go to the park and there's all this lush new landscaping. That's, that's my concern. The water plus the perception of our community of what we are doing to promote and educate people.
Yeah, if I may offer, last time around when this happened, people who had pools to fill bought water trucks of potable water from other locations and brought it in and filled it. They didn't use potable water from their own tap, if you will. And that's someone's prerogative. We don't, it's not our responsibility to worry about that. I don't think. But it says right here in the report, city operations will use recycled water for street sweeping. Construction dust control and watering street trees from a water truck. So we're already doing non-potable, non-potable water.
So add to that, add to that list, any of our new landscaping.
I think, I think staff would have to come back to us and tell us, for example, at JD Morgan, that would be an added contract cost. And if it hasn't gone out to bid at Campbell Park, it might be included in the bid. But that's something the staff has to look at. Yes, Todd?
Yeah, I would, I would suggest that that if you wanted to add that to a stage three, we'd have to do an ordinance revision. Because that clear, that that is not part of the stage three ordinance that we have before you this evening. If you would like us to make revisions to the ordinance and move things up from stage four to stage three, we would have to, we'd have to recraft the ordinance and 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 bring that back to council. At this point, we were trying to be consistent, as Perry mentioned, with the messaging from from Valley Water and San Jose Water. And so the measures that we're recommending are consistent with what our customers and residents will be getting from their, from their water, from the water retailer.
Thank you. So we are now at the point, if there is additional comment or a motion. And I would reinforce my earlier comment and what Dr. Director Capurso just said. We have to look at what it is that's before us, what is on our agenda, which is the implementation of stage three of our existing ordinance as opposed to modifying the ordinance. We're implementing the existing stage three ordinance. Councilwoman Landry?
Okay, I agree. We're implementing stage three. I am concerned, highly concerned that by putting in brand new landscaping this year is going to send the wrong message to our community. Whether that's part of the motion tonight or whether that's something that comes forward later to be that, that's fine. But I'm just very, very concerned of what message we convey to our community when we're out watering, especially if the JDM turns on the water every day to water their new landscaping. That's, that's my main concern. I want to be on the record. I do not support any new landscaping right now, separate from this motion that we're going to make.
Okay, thank you. And with that, does anyone wish to make a motion?
I'll make a motion if no one else wants to. I make a motion that the city council adopt a resolution to implement stage three drought restrictions based on the Santa Clara Valley Water Districts and the San Jose Water Company's water conservation goal of 33% of 2013 usage.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Landry. Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Councilmember Bybee offered a second. May we have a roll call, please? Yes, Councilmember Bybee.
Hi.
Councilwoman Landry?
Hi.
Councilmember Lopez?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Resnikoff?
Hi.
Mayor Gibbons? Hi. Thank you. And I think staff's heard some comments and it may require some additional coordination with the city manager on how to move forward on Councilwoman Landry's concerns. Okay, we are now at item number 11. Redistricting. This is the redistricting process for council member district boundaries. The recommended action is that the city council provide direction to staff regarding the process for redistricting boundary lines for district-based elections, including consideration of utilizing a staff-led process without a redistricting commission. And presenter is City Clerk Dusty Christopherson.
Yes, hello. I'll turn my video camera on for you while I set it, turn on the PowerPoint. Show my screen. Can you see my screen? Yes, thank you. Great. So thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. The item before you tonight represents the first conversation relating to the redistricting process for council district boundaries following the 2020 U.S. Census completion. 2019, as a result of a complaint filed relating to the California Voting Rights Act, the council voted to undergo an extensive public outreach and public hearing process, which resulted in the adoption of ordinance number 2248, which established a new district based governance with a final map identifying five districts. Each district is represented by a council member who is elected by the voters who live within that district. This initial redistricting process was completed using resident data provided by the 2010 federal census. Each jurisdiction with district-based elections are required by state law to review their district boundaries and update them accordingly. To new population numbers is provided by the federal decennial census. Census data is normally released to the cities in the spring. However, due to the pandemic, it is anticipated the 2020 census data will be published and available to the city by the end of September of this year. It's important to note that the draft redistricting process calendar that's provided in your packet tonight is based on receiving that redistricting data on September the 30th, which is the last date for us to receive it. Should the city receive the date earlier, staff can adjust the calendar accordingly. As was described in the staff report, the law provides council with options for managing this redistricting process. The first option is choosing to run a city staff-led process with an identified community outreach plan. This was the process that was chosen in 2019 for the initial districting process and was successful. The city will maintain its relationship with the current contractor demographer who was utilized in 20, in the 2019 process. The demographer will assist in all community workshops and provide the online mapping tool, which will be available on our city website for interested individuals. By utilizing this method, the council will hold all required public hearings and maintain the authority to adopt the final boundary map. Overall, this option is simpler to manage and will be the least costly. This is the option that our like neighboring jurisdictions have chosen as well. The second option is to establish an advisory redistricting commission. This method will require additional council meetings and time to establish and to recruit and select its commission members. City council would jointly hold all required public hearings with the commission. The commission would recommend maps to council to review, but council would maintain the authority to adopt the final map. It's important to note that there are extensive qualification requirements to serve on any redistricting commission, which are detailed in the staff report. This is the option. This option will take more time and be more costly to support. Options three and four are very similar. They are to choose an independent or hybrid redistricting commission. This is the most intense, intensive type of commission to select. It will require a significant amount of time to establish and to appoint members to, as they are appointed by a separate third party. With a hybrid commission, council maintains the authority to adopt the final map from those recommended by the commission. The independent redistricting commission is purely independent and will have the authority to adopt the final boundary map. As was detailed in the staff report, these can be the most expensive type of commissions to select. So the city will be required to provide consultant and legal services for the commission as necessary. This is the type of commission selected by our most populated neighboring jurisdictions, such as the city of San Jose. Staff is recommending council select option one, a staff-led redistricting process, which will include the proposed community outreach plan. Part of that community outreach plan is listed on your screen. It's a public messaging, social media engagement on all platforms, dedicated redistricting website, targeted press releases and flyers to community groups, nonprofits, churches and schools, public notices, display advertisements in our local newspapers, community center, channel 26 and on YouTube. We have direct community outreach, so staff will staff an information booth at the farmer's market once a month for the duration of this entire redistricting process. And at least one community workshop hosted at City Hall on a Saturday. Online interactive tools will be developed, including an interactive mapping tool to allow residents to draw their own district maps and a designated email address for citywide communication. It's important to note that all public communications will be available in English and Spanish. Staff feels that the proposed plan exceeds the minimum state law requirements in this process and is in line with the process that was followed in 2019. As a final summary, staff is seeking council's consensus on three main points for the redistricting process. The first is to provide direction regarding which umbrella process to utilize to accomplish the redistricting process, a staff-led process with a proposed community outreach plan or establishment of a redistricting commission. And third, any feedback or additional actions council would like to see taken on the proposed community outreach plan. And that's the end of our presentation and myself and city manager Brian Levantall are here for any questions.
Thank you, City Clerk Christopherson. I will open the discussion from council. Do we have any questions of council, from council members? Seeing none. Councilwoman Landry?
I want to clarify. I heard our city clerk say we would be using the same consultant that we used in two years ago.
Yes, 2019, that's correct.
Do we have a choice?
Well, it's it's slim pickings, if I will say. At this point in time, I think all of the, all of the cities are required to go through this process. Very limited options and all of them are busy this time of year. But it is beneficial to use the same company you used in 2019. They're familiar with the city of Campbell now. They've got all of our maps. They have their mapping tool developed and it's a much simpler process than starting from scratch with a new vendor. So it is, staff feels it's kind of in our best interest to keep using this demographer.
Thank you.
I would just offer, I understand Councilwoman Landry's question. Okay. If there are none, we will open the public hearing. Are there any comments from the public, Madam Clerk?
And we don't have anybody signed up to speak, no.
Thank you. If none, we'll close the public hearing and bring the discussion back to council. So staff has asked us to give direction in three particular areas. I'd like to add the schedule to the discussion points. Do we have any comments or discussions by council members? Okay. Councilwoman Landry?
Come on, you guys. I try not to be the first one. I'm very concerned about what happened last time. We had one area over by me, the McGlinsey neighborhood. The technology park that has been there since 1999, 2000 showed 1,900 people lived on top of the technology building. There's no housing at all over there. So when council or when district two was drawn, they counted 1,900 people in their 8,000 that don't exist in that property. And then there was the, the district line was drawn and making that 1,900 invisible people part of district two. The other thing was they broke down into district blocks instead of district, since, I'm sorry, census blocks instead of census districts. And some blocks had zero, some had three, others had 1,000. And so when the mapping tool was used online, the consultant provided an example and they drew rectangles and squares. And everybody saw the example and said, oh, I have to follow, I have to draw rectangles, I have to draw squares. And so people didn't understand the sample map to know that that was not the only choices that they had made. They thought they had to go down Winchester over Bascom, whatever. And so the mapping tool was to me inaccurate. And I did talk to the city manager and he says, we have to follow the census tracks, but our map was the census blocks. So I want some clarification on that. And these erroneous numbers, like the one where it was 17 or 1,900 people on top of a commercial building, how can we make sure that the data in the program is correct? Do we have a way to go back to whoever gave us that and say, wait, those people don't live there? There is nobody there. And then how do you deal with these little zeros and three census blocks? And then the other one is the outreach meeting, I think we need more than one. This is over a couple of months. I think we need at least three. And let's see, what was my other comment? Can't think of it right now. They'll come to me. So and I I was not all that happy with the other consultant because of some of these other problems.
So let me try to cover that. And Councilwoman Landry, we did discuss this today. And you're correct in the statement that this, this process that we're going through doesn't afford us the ability to question the census figures. We're obligated to use the census figures that are published by the U.S. Census Bureau. So you're making a distinction between census tracks and census blocks for purposes of the of the council and the public. Census tracks are, they're larger areas of the city. But as we look at dividing those, the city up, they use census blocks that 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 build to fill up the census track. So if there is areas that are misidentified by the Census Bureau or populations that are extrapolated in in part of the census process to an area that that we believe may be an error, this districting process isn't set up to fix those. There, there is probably a process to agree that with the Census Bureau and go through a correction process. And and I don't know that we have the answers to how that's done this evening. But with regard to addressing areas where census blocks, you believe may, may contain a population that may be an error, either plus or minus. When we form these, these districts, there is a margin of error of plus or minus 5% with each of the districts. So you do have some flexibility to add populations to districts and take them away, so long as you're within that margin of error to try to accommodate with how you, how you shape your districts. But but this process that's before you doesn't correct those figures. That that would be a separate process that we'd have to engage with, with the Census Bureau. And likely, I would suspect we're not going to get those answers or those results in time to to redistrict our election. So that would probably be done in parallel to this, but but not, but not the focus of this process.
Thank you. But the concern I have was the last time you had to be plus or minus 8,000 people. And when 1,700 people are shown in a district that the 1,700 don't exist, the voting just, the people then is is less than what is seven, 5,000? I can't do my mouth in my head. Paul, you're good at math. 8,000 minus 1,700 in in people. So it wasn't even distribution. And that's just one. There were multiple cases where things like that were showing up.
Yeah, and that's that, you know, honestly, that's not reflective of the demographer. That's the census figures that were being provided by the Census Bureau. So you know, where those areas are, we could look at ways to address that with the Census Bureau. But but my feeling is that timing is probably not going to be timely enough to get changes incorporated to Census Bureau and adopted by them and new maps. to get changes incorporated to Census Bureau and adopted by them and new maps reissued for us to do our districting by the deadlines that we need to meet. But certainly we could try to address those separately with the Census Bureau moving forward.
Okay, and if we're going to give samples, example maps, do more than one. So it's very clear. You don't have to go down just the major streets.
Yeah, I think there's probably some room for how we communicate with the public. We can talk more about how we explain that process. I think there was some learning curve there last year with the drawing of the maps and I understand the technology is better this go around. And I think each time we do this, it'll get easier and easier.
Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you. I my my comment is that in terms of public outreach, I thought my experience of the process last time was that is very successful. I think we had incredibly high amount of participation and people drawing maps and engagement. And except that that I thought was pretty exceptional for what I've seen for this kind of process. So I really I'd be supportive of, you know, I'd hope to get that kind of public engagement. Again, so I was pleased in terms of those results. I do agree with councilwoman Landry that I'd probably like to see more than one community engagement meeting, just as much, especially if we can have these be virtual, then I think it's a no-brainer to have at least two or three. And I think that'll be a big benefit to the community. And I also think that unfortunately, I think we're likely to see flaws this time again in the census data and then that the it's not ideal at all, but that there's not going to be much that we can do about that. There's a lot of questions nationally about the the numbers and it just because of a number of conditions for the last census, why they might be flawed this time and it's going to be a national problem for a lot of districting and I'm not sure that that's necessarily on the demographer when we have data that that we have to go off of. And I'd also, I'd question whether the numbers in the district, just based off my experience, were that inequitable or, you know, lopsided. So but I, you know, I won't get too far into that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Resnikov.
Thank you. Yeah, I would I would say that we should be careful about throwing this demographer under the bus. I think there are census problems and I think councilmember Lopez, you said there are going to be more census problems. There probably are every nine. I think we have to take into consideration, the last time we started with an empty slate, we had nothing. And then we went, I mean, we went to the point of what? Two dozen or more different maps and things like that, a lot of community outreach. I think ultimately it worked, the goal worked. And we found something that to me seemed equitable. That doesn't mean it doesn't need to be tweaked, but it was a good process. So to start with, I would like to see, I think it's option one then of the city staff-led process that doesn't involve delegating this to a commission or a committee or something like that. For a few reasons, I think it's council's responsibility with community input. We'd certainly increase the cost if we do it otherwise. If you look at the charts on the number of meetings, you know, I know we're going to hear soon, mayor's mentioned it, about the timeframe and wanting to get this done sooner rather than later, because people may want to jump in a race and run for some open seats. We add in as many as three council meetings and 12 commission meetings to go outside the council. So I don't think that makes sense. That being said, I don't mind having, you know, one or more extra community meetings and I think those work, those work well. I think the process worked well. I think this time, instead of starting from scratch, we have a good framework. It may have some problems. We have to tweak it. We have to tweak it based on the census and based on any errors and inequities we think we have. I think it's a lot easier task this time. And I think there's a benefit to continuing with the same demographer. So that would be my goal to stay with the number one option, same demographer. If somebody wants another meeting or so, community-wise, I'm fine with that as well. Time-wise, we'll get to that, I'm sure. I don't know, going to April is problematic, right? Because we're, we're, I think, six months away from an election then. And you know, for some of us, if we were running, it doesn't matter because we're in the heart of a district and we were going to be in that district, we know. But we have candidates that could be on the fringes and can't announce, right? Because they're going to wind up in a different district or maybe we had one last time that could wind up in a different one because it was right on the border. That's problematic to wait till April. It really is. I don't know how we speed it up, but that's that's either going to keep people out or could have somebody jump in that finds themselves not eligible to be in that district. And that's that's, we got to avoid that sometimes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, councilmember Bybee, and then back to councilmember Lopez.
Thank you. So I I do support the the staff.
You're frozen.
Led process, I think was better. I think we had a good turnout from the community. I think what ended up with the districts is a pretty evenly distributed registration base so that there's a pretty even amount of voters in each district. I don't think this time around it's going to be as intensive as the first process. I just see more of a tweaking to the districts as opposed to major, any major change with districts. And I would support one or two community meetings and I would I would also recommend that one of the community meetings be held at the community center rather than City Hall. I think on the community center land is a better venue for that type of a workshop.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez and then councilwoman Landry.
Yeah, I just wanted my feedback to staff would also be given the the issues that that I've been following with the just nationally with the census data and availability in other states now they're handling their district process. I would have some kind of contingency in case we don't have the figures by the September date that that's on this schedule. Again, would not be ideal, but it may be something that would be out of our control and I just want to make sure that we would still be reasonably on track if that happens.
Thank you. I did see some published data Monday, where are we, Tuesday, must have been yesterday, that the census data is expected next week with a public usable tool the week after. So I don't know if that's the certified, but it implied to me that the data might be coming. So we'll we'll see. Councilwoman Landry.
Yeah, I do support option one, the staff recommended. I think the cost and the timeframe of the other options is not ideal and I agree with Vice Mayor that someone who's running who right now is on one side of the street could become in the other side and then be in a different district. I want to make sure I understand, we cannot just totally completely modify districts. We have to stay within the general outline. We're basically playing with the sides or can we completely redo an entire district?
I'm going to try and answer that, but Brian might as or Dusty may. Any map that comes forward is any map that comes forward.
That's not what I was told last time. The consultant last time said any redistricting would be mostly around the edges and not the the bulk of the district would stay where it is. So I'm asking that question.
Who's the best person to answer that? We don't have the consultant on board, city clerk.
I can answer that. I think the intent is to make adjustments for population changes. That's the intent of this process that we're going to see what what districts have population increases and decreases and we're going to make adjustments for those increases and decreases. What that looks like is entirely up to the council and your discretion and what you adopt, but I think the concept is that it's an adjustment around the borders. Now, there may be some other things you try to adjust while you're doing that, but the intent is to adjust for population changes and keep your margins within 5% plus or minus.
But there's nothing that says someone can't come up with a map that's different.
While that is true, that would create complexities that I don't know that we have the time to deal with. And if it actually changes districts that either existing council members are in or the upcoming elections, that probably creates some complexities for you. So for instance, if if district one and two were in the previous elections and districts three, four and five are in the next election, but if if district three, four and five changes populations with district one and two, you're going to have some people that don't get a vote in four years at all and other people that get a vote in two elections over four years. So I think you have to be mindful of the the impacts of that, although your statement is true, there's nothing prohibit a map from being drawn. It's certainly going to have far reaching impacts than making adjustments around the border.
Right. And I think my point is we're opening, I'm given the process we used last time, we opened the process of maps to the public. And I'm under the impression that we're still going to allow the public to propose maps. Those maps are not going to be designed by council members. It's open to council members and or the public. And any map coming forward would have to be considered. You would evaluate it based on what you just described as potentially disenfranchising someone from voting at all for the two cycles of elections, but we have to be open to whatever's presented and then do a pro and con for each.
That is correct. But I think the the initial analysis, just to be really clear, is going to be, how does the new figures as they're applied to each of the districts comply with federal law for district formations? And that question is going to tell you which districts are still within 5% of every other district and which districts are not. And those are the districts you're going to have to make adjustments to. The effort is to keep your districts in compliant with federal law and that will be the analysis the consultant does. And it provides what people draw and how they propose those that the doors open there, but 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 that's not the intent of the consultant and that wouldn't be the analysis.
May I add one more comment?
Yes, and then we'll go to Vice Mayor Resnikov.
There will be some people along the fringes of the district boundary that potentially did not vote in the 2020 election that may again not be able to vote in 2022. So it will not, there will be some little pieces of properties that could have that potential of not being able to vote from 2020 to 2022 and then into 2024.
I think that potential absolutely exists. I think through the selection process and where the boundaries are tweaked, you have some alternatives to probably avoid that. It's whether or not those alternatives are preferable to the council. So but that potential is there.
Vice Mayor Resnikov.
Thank you. Yeah, that was actually my exact point. I think I think that it's inevitable, for example, you might have been in Pruneyard and not voted, I'm sorry, downtown and not voted in Pruneyard and you move a couple of houses over, now you're in Pruneyard and not in downtown. I think, so for that reason, the city manager, they said, we could have a drastic change in districts, but we should limit those because I think that those fringe areas should be the only areas where we're looking at moving people into different districts. It minimizes disenfranchising people. In some cases, we may have the ability to tweak that. For example, I believe that the area, say, West on Hamilton Falls into Four Seas. Is that is that correct?
Sorry, say your question.
Other side of San Tomas.
Is that? The other side of San Tomas.
Safeway area, that area. Or is that downtown?
That's the Safeway area is district one.
No, he's asking the Safeway at Bud. That's district four.
No, 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 the Safeway, this, I'm talking about on Hamilton Avenue.
So that's district three.
Okay, so the reason I'm saying it because we have two districts that are but that will both be open. We may be able to tweak where if you move from one to the other, you're still voting, right? You may be voting in a different district, but you're voting. We have to minimize what councilmember Landry said, taking somebody that didn't vote in 20 and they don't vote in 22. I think that's the reason to not have a wide-scale revamping of all the districts, the big districts, because we could have a lot of that. So I advise that. And then in the areas where we know we have open districts that have but each other, let's try to make the changes there because it doesn't really matter as much if somebody votes in a different district as long as they were intending to vote this year or 22 and they can't. So that was just my my comment. We may have a little influence in which districts you move people around.
So if I may offer, we tried to get an update from the register of voters on some numbers of where population was shifting between, based on this map and what might be different. Areas one and two are the ones with the greatest potential for change. And what councilmember Landry was speaking to is that with the new numbers, I don't have the old numbers in front of me, with the new numbers, supposedly 8,000 people per group per district, give or take, for 40,000 total. The voting population in district one was 45,000 and the voting population in district two was 55, almost 56,000. So there seems to be a glitch there and that's related to, I think, your comment about the invisible 1,500 people kind of thing. So I just I just point out that there is, there is a problem with districts one and two, that's potential, I will say there's a potential problem with districts one and two. Districts three and four and five boundaries can shift because and everyone will still get to vote, which is, I think, the point we're aiming at. So let me try this. What the last time around, we kind of provided some guidelines to the maps. And some of the examples in the presentations were, you know, do you do bars or grids or whatever? They gave us a bunch of different examples with pros and cons. And we and we ended up saying we didn't want these various configurations. I'm trying to remember exactly how we phrased it. What I'm what I'm trying to get to is last time, the maps were open to anyone. I think we had about 20 people, 15 to 20 people submitting, you know, and most people submitted three, four or five maps each. We had a lot of maps, but only by a few people. But we did give parameters to what they drew. So what what kind of parameters do we want to do this time around?
So, Madam Mayor, just just a point of clarification. I think that would be a discussion for a future council meeting. And we have to have a hearing to have that discussion for the public before we draw that map. Tonight is really just a process clarification and I appreciate those issues. They're all issues we will have to deal with. And we will have to provide that direction. I'm not sure tonight's the night to do that.
Okay, thank you for that. I tried to keep us on target the last time, but I didn't do it on this one, I guess.
It's all right. We're a team.
Districting process for council member district boundaries. Okay, so the process we're talking about is literally whether it's council-driven or consultant or committee-driven driven. And the staff recommendation is for council-driven. Okay, so if we stick to that, I would also like to add in the comment, I think the schedule is not expeditious enough, particularly given that we have a lot of the data. We have a lot of, we have two districts, two districts that are have no incumbent. And that means there's got to be a lot of effort to get candidates to run. And we can't wait till April. And the boundary is going to be really critical on that. And because the two districts with no incumbents Um, and the boundary is going to be really critical um on that. And because the two districts with no incumbents uh border each other. So um, I just offered that as part of this discussion on the process, I'm supportive of the staff recommendation, but not of the schedule. I think the schedule has to come back much more aggressively. Vice Mayor, do you still have your hand? Do you still have your hand up?
Just a question, if I could, and and Brian make an answer or follow up later. I'd not heard of this 1900 before.
What?
Hey, the the nineteen.
You're breaking, you're breaking up.
Well, I'm not sure what's going on. Can you hear me?
Yeah, that's better.
Okay, I, just about this 1900 people, which I've never heard before. I'm just wondering, are we saying that the census total census numbers in Campbell was overstated by 1900? Or the numbers right, these 1900 are misplaced within where we recognize them living in Camp?
Not sure.
They were shown on top of the building. That's the technology park, but they should have been shown on the properties along Union.
So the 1900 was a correct number of residents?
But it wasn't shown where it needed to be.
Had their address, they had their location wrong, but the census total number of 40 some thousand was correct.
The total of the city was as close as the 2010 census. It was the distribution of the numbers on the wrong properties.
Okay, thank, I just not heard that, had not heard that before.
Okay, so um, I think there is consensus for uh supporting the staff recommendation that it be a council led process. Am I correct on that? Yes, yes, Councilmember Bybee, yes. Yes, okay, so that's unanimous. The second point is the schedule. And um, I would recommend that the council ask for a more aggressive schedule. And I I'm, I I'm thinking February timeframe. Is there any support for that, Councilwoman Landry? Councilmember Lopez?
Yes, and and a few of us mentioned also um adding more engagement meetings.
Okay, I I'll get there. Thank you for reminding me. Um, Vice Mayor Resnikov, are you okay for a February target date?
Yeah, I think we should, let's get some feedback from staff and see what's, what's realistic and done, but certainly we need to be cognizant of fact, people need to know what district. So soon. I just don't know what's a fair, what is a fair month to get it done with the public meetings and get it done properly.
Right. Um, I I, and I will come back to that. Councilmember Bybee, um, moving up the schedule?
Part of it depends on when we get the census data and also whether the staff, you know, how it fits into their schedule as well. So um, I I I don't want it to say, let's move it up if there's reasons why it's being proposed the way it is, so.
So um, to Councilmember Lopez's point, um, I ha- I have to honestly say that I think it is reasonable for council to ask staff to prepare a proposal with the consultant to have the project um results by February, and if they can't do it, they need to justify a longer schedule. I I just, I agree with Vice Mayor Resnikov that April is too late for candidates.
And I also have to take, take into consideration, we're not the only city in in town that's having, or in it, that's, that's going through this process. And so you know, we have to fit into their schedule and they have to fit into ours, depending on what what their other clients are are um doing as well. So I I I don't want to just say, yeah, let's accelerate. It's not going to be doable.
So I think what I was phrasing it was that we want it to be sooner, and if it can't, they have to come back with a reason. That's, I I was giving it and out. But I think um, we don't want to leave it in April just because it's April. Um, is the deadline, April 17th or whatever is the statutory deadline. Um, I don't think there's any reason why we can't request something sooner.
We'll approach it with the consultant. We'll report back to you. Um, I I think Councilmember Bybee's right. We, we are in the same boat with every other city this demographer is working for that will have elections um next year as well. Um, and and we can work through that. These are pre-programmed dates to try to get something booked with the consultant so that we could guarantee we were done within the right period of time. I think the other thing that's important to consider too is this timeline is based on the deadlines uh for us to receive the data on the census, uh, which really is September 30th for that deadline. Uh, we heard the mayor say that um, that she's been provided information that we should receive that uh much sooner than that. Um, but there is a 21 day waiting period once we receive the data before we can even have a hearing on it. So the way that we're showing this according to the deadlines is it's October 21st before we really start the heavy lifting on this. Um, and and that seems late to get it started. So if that process can be accelerated and we get data sooner, that certainly will help. Um, and then we have to balance in the additional uh, the public workshop. So we'll work on the timing and we'll report back dates to the council of uh where we, how we uh can potentially accelerate that.
Okay, so I want to come back to the comment about public meetings um and into the schedule. So every council meeting is a public meeting. Okay, so I'm questioning, I uh, what the value of an additional public meeting is? Yeah, Councilmember Lopez requested it, and Councilwoman Landry has a comment.
The difference that I saw last time was the public workshop was a hands-on. You had maps sitting in front of you and you were at a table. And different, I think, consultants or staff walked around and helped people actually draw the maps or look at the maps. And if we're in the council chambers, you're sitting in a chair and you don't necessarily have a table and a map in front of you. So if we don't have three, I would support two, where we actually are at the community center at a table. People have a map and are are helping show now to draw maps.
Well, I would remind you that we're not starting from scratch this time.
My comment stands.
Okay. All right. So do people want to have two public meetings?
Um, Councilwoman Landry, I agree with what you just said, except I would be fine with one of those being virtual, which I think could actually help get more people that you might not be able to go to an in-person one. But yeah, otherwise, I agree with what you said. You're just going to be able to spend more time and and go more in in depth, and there may be people who are totally new to the the process.
I'm, I'm fine with one of them or both of them, the hybrid virtual and in person. Uh, but it's the pa- fact of whether you're sitting in a little chair in the stadium or audience, or you have something in front of you. If you're at home, you have a table, that kind of stuff.
Yeah. Um, I would also also offer a comment that um, the consultant offered electronic map to do the uh boundaries and ultimately, absolutely no one could use it. We all ended up doing it manually. So um, I think it's really important to have the consultant have a tool that is viable. Um, I mean, that, I recall that that was really very unsuccessful.
And it frustrated a lot of people and they dropped out of the process out of frustration.
Right. And doing it virtually, if you have a tool that is working electronically, makes a lot of sense. Um, it's just a question of whether we're going to get back to having to do it by hand. Okay, so um, we are okay with the process recommended by staff. Um, we were requesting staff to expedite the schedule with the consultant to the extent possible, ideally February. And we are supportive of having at least two public meetings. Does that sound uh consistent? Okay, I'm seeing nodding heads.
Yeah, I think, I think we're clear on the direction.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that discussion. And now we move on to item number 12, which is, oh, let's see, do we require a vote on that one? I bet we do. Uh, just feedback for the redistricting process. Beg pardon? It's just feedback for the redistricting process. Okay, so we don't need a motion or anything? No. Okay, thank you. Uh, item number 12, designation of voting delegate and alternate for the 2021 League of California Cities Annual Conference. Uh, the recommended action is that the city council designate a voting delegate and an alternate for the League of California Cities Annual Conference General Business Meeting to be held on September 24th, 2021. And is that in Sacramento or is it virtual?
Sac.
Right now, they're planning for it to be in Sacramento. If all things stay where they are, that I think we have to be flexible. That may change, but right now they're planning it to be alive.
In Sacramento, I just, as opposed to Long Beach. It's a Sacramento rotation. Okay. Uh, City Clerk, where are you?
I'm here. I am here. Um, so before you is the um, it's the annual choice of voting delegates for the League of Cal- California Cities Annual Conference and Expo um taking place September 22nd and 24th. Um, it is in person. At the time, we got the memo as of June 16th, the meeting was in person. We will see if it continues to stay in person or if it moves to virtual. Um, um, council needs to um, vote on who their delegates um to this conference will be, who their voting delegates to this conference will be, and we need to notify the League of California Cities.
Thank you. And um, it's a little early. We, this meeting is typically in October. So um, having it in September was a little bit of of a difference this year. So do we have any volunteers who would like to go? Uh, Councilmember Lopez, any other volunteers?
I'm sorry, but I'm going to be on vacation.
Lucky you. Do we have anyone else who'd like to go? Vice Mayor?
Not a, not a good time for me business-wise. I can't go, I don't have the time to go Sacramento, unfortunately.
Okay. Councilmember Bybee, is it possible?
Uh, no, I'll be out of town.
Okay. Um, and um, I, I'm happy to attend if it's virtual. I would not attend if it's um in person. So I'll be the alternate um, with the understanding that it's virtual. Let's see, it is, what date is that? What date did we say? September something?
September 22nd through the 24th. Which is the entire conference and the voting delegate really only needs to be there for the the vote day at the end of the conference, but the entire conference is the 22nd, 24th.
Okay, I cannot do the 22nd. And I cannot do the 24th. I could probably do the 24th in the morning. If that's when the vote is. I think the vote is typically on the third day in the morning.
Correct.
So I could probably do that on Friday morning. But I have meetings I can't, can't not be. Um, so um, I'll, I'll, I'll be the alternate and we'll just leave it at that, knowing that we'll have to deal with it. So Councilmember Lopez, you're going to have your experience. It's normally a very nice event. You meet a lot of people across the state. You have a lot of connections and the presentations are quite good. So um, if it works to for you to go, I think that would be great.
Yeah, happy to to do that. And you'll all need a, hope I don't get sick or something happens. Uh, but happy to attend in in person.
All right. Thank you very much for that. So um, do we need a vote on that?
Yes.
And, yes.
All right, so um, we need a motion for Councilmember Lopez.
I'll make the motion that Councilmember Lopez be the voting delegate to the League of Cities, uh, League of California Cities Annual Conference General Business Meeting and Mayor Gibbons be the alternate.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Resnikov and a second by Councilwoman Landry. May we have a roll call, please? Yes, Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilwoman Landry?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Resnikov?
Aye.
Mayor Gibbons?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And we will now go to unfinished business of which there is none. And then finally, we have the council committee reports. And we're going to try a new system where we're going to have the list of committees by council member and um allow each council member to speak to their committees. So Councilmember Bybee, you're first.
Oh, uh, I attended uh with the Vice Mayor on the Finance Subcommittee meeting. And the recommendation will be coming forward at the next meeting, the second meeting in August. And I also attended the uh Wine Walk, which is very successful.
Excuse me. Thank you. And next is Councilmember Landry?
Oh, yes, thank you. Um, so I attended the um autonomous vehicle uh company Neuro and NewRO had a wonderful uh display of their new autonomous vehicle. And what I found very interesting is this one is specifically geared to have no passengers at all. And it's only for delivery and pickups. And it changes the whole design of the vehicle because you do not have to have a person inside at all. For, you know, it's not a transportation of people type thing. So it was very interesting. Um, I also, um, as the Policy Advisory Committee for the Water District, we met last Wednesday. And we made a motion that I want to read to the council. The Water Commission voted by roll call majority to recommend that the Valley Water Board of Directors write a letter to the State, MTC, and ABAG with the commission's concern of the limited water resources, the length of construction of Anderson Dam, and the requirement of the current Rena numbers be revisited so that there is more data at which time of balancing housing growth to sustainable water demand and supply. And housing development will be within the scope that is feasible, giving a lot, given allowable water supply over the planning time period. It was a close vote. It was eight to seven. The full board is um voting on this motion, I think, this evening. Uh, the point of the discussion was the water conservation, water, the drought, the Anderson Dam, and then we're having to build new houses. The last one is I attended with the mayor last Friday, the um ribbon cutting for Home Instead. And I won a raffle item.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Lopez?
Uh, no committees for me this time, although I I appreciate this new format we're trying out.
Good, thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor Resnikov?
Yeah, the uh Finance Subcommittee that Councilmember Bybee mentioned and and as well, I was, I saw her at the Wine Walk. It was just nice to see people downtown walking around. It was a real good environment. We're happy to be down there. And the other meeting I had was at um Sevaca. We had been off the prior, the prior meeting had been canceled, so it's been a while. Um, typical good results in Sevaca right now. I think year to date, they look at live release on dogs and cats and it's sitting at 99%, which is amazing. So that means that 99% of the animals that go in are being placed elsewhere. And when you consider that people will drop, well, they receive in injured dogs, for example, that might be hit by a car. That goes against their stats. People bring in animals that need to be put down. When you consider those things, they can never hit 100%, but they're right on the, on the border of that, doing a great job.
I would just offer uh Councilmember, uh Vice Mayor Resnikov, that um, Sevaca needs to be more aggressive at its community outreach because so many people don't know it exists. And I find myself certainly on a monthly, if not even weekly basis, uh, offering that as a resource to people who have uh animals that they can no longer care for. So I I encourage that to be um really, really expanded.
Okay, they do. I mean, that's, that's good, good to know. I mean, they do a lot of outreach online and they, and they're typically always at our street fairs, which of course we haven't had. Um, I don't have the exact date, but they do an annual fundraiser. And I believe that this year it's going to be held at the Angely House on the Garden there. So that's coming up in a month or so. I'll get, I'll get details of that for.
Yeah, um, have them put it on Nextdoor um and um on Facebook.
They are definitely on Facebook um regularly. Then I see, I I'll have to check on Nextdoor.
Okay, because I don't see anything on Facebook, but Nextdoor would be really good for them. Uh, okay, um, and me. Uh, occasion, uh, the A-Bag has been on hiatus for July and August. Okay, Sean, the A-BAG has been on hiatus for July and August. The Historical Museum is continuing looking for new board members fundraising, and as you heard this evening, the new opening of the museum needing docents and staff and so forth. They are recovering from the floods, and all of that is moving forward very successfully. And nothing from the Cities Association this month, and then the city attorney, city clerk, city manager, we had no meetings. Same expressway, no meetings. Economic Development Meeting, we don't have Legislative Subcommittee meeting. Both Economic and Legislative will be meeting in the next week or two. The Silicon Valley Clean Energy Board took July off, but the subcommittees met. And at the meeting next Wednesday, the board is going to review the budget for beginning October, sort of October, yeah, October one through September. And the good news is that we are projecting, I imagine that will allow the cost of power to maintain below PG&E costs. They are also in the process of completing the legal documents for the power prepay, which is the proposal I mentioned that they were researching, which will allow a savings of, of anywhere from one-point-six to one-point-nine million dollars a year. And that will go directly to the customer's savings. So, a lot of good things about that are going on, and there are a lot of new rebate programs. So, I encourage everyone to look at Silicon Valley Clean Energy e-Hub for that. The West Valley Mayors and Managers met, and interestingly, we talked about water, and there was very specific questions by several of us who, about the growth, and is the Water District prepared to respond to all of the housing elements and the capacity of the water. I received a follow-up to my specific questions, and they referenced their water master plan for twenty-forty. And it was based on what I believe to be old data. They were not using the twenty-fifty data. And they rationalized it by saying it was only a draft. And I said, that's not a valid reason not to use it, and you need to update your information. So, I, I didn't walk away from that, having an awful lot of confidence that the Water District was prepared. And I also asked a question of what their forecast is, you know, and what agreements they have in place to hedge the demand for water. And I did not get a satisfactory answer on that either. So, that's it. Special, I've got, I'm trying to read my own notes, notes here. Oh, we had a special meeting with the supervisors last Friday night on the status of COVID and the Delta variant. It was simply stated, the situation with the COVID variant of the Delta variant is very serious. They explained that the Delta variant is the most aggressive virus in the history and documented history. It has two things. One is, it is a denser virus. And if you thought about having, in your breath, a million parts per, per breath, you would get five or ten million parts per breath. It's the extent of it is very, very prolific, which is why it makes it more contagious. And the contagion, instead of being in an enclosed space with someone for fifteen minutes, it's now five minutes. So, just really very, very serious, and the strong support of mandatory masks. And they have asked all councils, all cities to make vaccination mandatory for all staff with testing as an alternative. But it is meant to be a mandatory vaccination regulation as opposed to a testing regulation. And council will be reviewing that in the next two weeks. It's my understanding. And we, that's, that's it. We did the ribbon cutting. I would, yeah, that's it. Okay. Everyone else got everything else doing, done? Everybody's covered what they want to talk about? Okay, we will close the meeting. Thank you all for your time this evening, and good discussions on many topics, and we will see you in two weeks, if not sooner. We may need a special meeting on vaccination of staff.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Bye.